All right, thank you Brian, and welcome everyone to the June 14, 2021 Homewood City Council meeting. We are going to start tonight with a presentation from the mayor regarding our outstanding employee of the first quarter.
Thank you all. Sorry, as you can see, we're in June and we're still talking about the first quarter. Outstanding employee and sadly, it was just the fact that we had to wait on all of the plaques and awards and everything to be done and ready and then putting the timing together for our recipient to join us. So if I could have Cody Albarado and Chief Hill, please come up and join me. I'm going to let Chief Hill tell you the story. It is one of the most fascinating things that I've heard this year. It's just an absolutely extreme situation and I'm so glad that somebody from Homewood was there to react and to be able to do the things that he did. And we will present this award after Chief Hill speaks.
So this is Cody Albarado. He's been with us since May of 2019. Sits in, he's been to several classes, he's a really good employee. We think a lot of him and you're going to find out why in a few minutes. His wife is here Hannah, his mother Michelle, and a friend Gary Snow from Hoover Fire. So, and then his engine company, they're in the back. But on March 26th firefighter Albarado was coming back from a class. There was a wreck between a car hauler and a FedEx truck. The FedEx truck went over the embankment, the engine compartment caught on fire. The driver was trapped. Cody along with the driver of the car hauler put the fire out and then Cody Albarado along with some other bystanders lifted the truck off of the driver because firefighter Albarado realized, hey, he's bleeding. There's a lot of blood here. We need to do something, we need to get him out from under here and see what's wrong. Several lacerations in the meantime, he had an amputated leg. Albarado took off his belt, used it like a tourniquet, and secured his leg until fire got on the scene. Assisted them in getting the tourniquet on him, stabilizing him, and he lived. So it's quite a good story. I feel a little bit bad, he was worried that he was in trouble because he ruined his uniforms. I said, "You're a hero, it's okay, we'll get you new uniforms." So, this is Cody Albarado.
And just real quick, just a small token of our appreciation for what you did and we also have a plaque that your name is on that's outside in the hallway that we will be doing for all of this as well. So just wanted to award you this and thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Chief Hill and firefighter Albarado. We appreciate y'all sharing that story with us, it's an amazing story. All right, so with that, I will call this meeting to order and we're going to start tonight with an invocation from Mr. Jones and then we'll follow that with a pledge.
Please rise. Let us pray. Mighty and merciful God, as this sunny day draws to a close, we pause and give you thanks for the peace and prosperity of Homewood, for the joyful noise of the children in our parks, on our streets, for the comfort and safety of our senior citizens. We pray your blessings upon our police officers, our firefighters, if you heard earlier, park and recreation workers, street and sanitation crews, librarians, and all of the clerks and administrators of the city who faithfully serve Homewood. We pray you will send your spirit of wisdom and justice upon us along with the mayor so that with steadfast purpose, we may faithfully serve Homewood to promote the well-being. May we as a community continue to take care of the needs of the less fortunate and show hospitality to all strangers. We ask all of this in your holy name, amen.
Face flag, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. All right, Ms. Salter, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltonie? Counselor Gier, here. Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
I think he says join us by the way he just texted me. Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith? Counselor Nels?
Here.
Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
You got a couple out but you still have a couple.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item is the reading of the minutes from our regular council meeting on May 24, 2021. Those have been distributed earlier this week. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of those minutes.
President Wyatt, I just want to make sure that's too many to change.
We have the changes that you had in there.
Then move to approve.
Second. Motion by Ms. Andres, second by Mr. Harden, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, we count Counsel Hardin's, I mean Counsel Wolverton's.
Yes.
Okay.
Better.
I just checked and I saw.
That's what we got, nine?
Nine.
Okay, nine to zero. All right, next we have board vacancies. We'll start with the park board which has.
Six or seven.
Seven maybe?
Yeah. Ward two, when would y'all like to do interviews?
We'd like to do it next Wednesday and Thursday.
Not this week, but next week?
Next week.
Okay.
A week from this Wednesday?
Yeah, so 23rd and 24th.
Do you want to start them at five?
That sounds good.
Okay, Ms. Salter, can you work on that for us? Thank you very much.
So you're just like half and half or something?
Yeah.
And, um, so the HEC, I know Counsel Wolverton's on, it was an at-large position but I don't think we had any applicants that I'm aware of.
Okay, and just to, Counselor Sims and I were talking right beforehand and I didn't get a chance to come back and ask you, we had the position that Michael Churchman resigned and then we had the one that Bram's position. Are both of those need to be filled or?
Um, I'll have to look and see, I'll see if I can pull it.
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay, so we have two positions?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I don't remember if both of them are at large or not though.
Okay.
So who's position is there currently?
Michael Churchman and then Bram's was the second one.
If you can give me time to look it up for the end of the meeting and let you know.
Perfect.
If I can pull it up for me.
Yep, we'll give you some time to do that and we'll come back to that.
Okay.
All right, and then last, we have a Ward two library board position that is, the term is coming up, I believe in July, so we need to open that position as well. I think we do have an incumbent that is eligible to serve another term.
Yes.
But we'll need to open that up. Are you, Ward two, are y'all fine with doing two weeks, leaving it open until the 28th?
How about you Andrew?
That sounds fine to me.
Okay, then we will have that position close at 4:30 on June 28th.
And I just, I thank you Counselor Sims, since he just pulled it up, yeah, when you said Bram, we didn't ring about that's our new city arborist.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, really sorry, because I know it's Abraham but he was Ward three. So the one that we had announced earlier was Churchman that we didn't get an applicant that was at large.
Got it.
So we have a Ward three where Mr. Hodger's in, he stepped in now to see the city arborist.
Got it. So then we need to reopen the at-large position and then open the Ward three position on the HEC and Ward three reps, is it all right to do the 28th, leave it open until the 28th, two weeks? Does that work for y'all? Walter, are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
And just to clarify.
I will say.
Sorry.
Go ahead Andrew.
I will say, President Wyatt, that Matt Rich had indicated that he had some interest from We Love Homewood Day, he was trying to follow up on some of that so, and obviously he's very much aware of both positions being open now, so I'll touch base with him again and see if he's heard anything more.
Okay.
So the library board and the HEC, all of those three will be open until 28 or 4:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
And sorry to, you know, go over this and possibly cause confusion, but so we recently appointed Scott Resick for Ward three. And does each ward have two reps then, or is that possibly a mistake for what's online for Bram?
In other words, is it another at-large position?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry to, you know, so maybe we just need to confirm that, I'm sorry to create confusion.
That's okay.
So you're saying that, say that again.
Scott Resick was appointed for Ward three HEC a few months ago. So if we only have one Ward three representative and not two, then it may be incorrect online and Bram may actually be an at-large appointment.
Okay, I'll just have to check on that.
That's fine, we'll check on whether it's at-large or Ward three, but then we'll keep it open until 4:30 on the 28th. Okay, all right. All right, we have no additions to the agenda tonight and no consent agenda, so we'll go straight to old business. First item is 04, 0421, public hearing set for June 28, 2021 at 6:00 PM for consideration to rezone the northern portion of 260 Oxmore Road from a GERD to C5. The applicant is Chelsea Payne, who's the attorney for the owner of the property. This item comes to, is for, they're seeking to have this done to permit the construction of a three-story storage facility. This comes from the planning commission with a vote of nine to zero for favorable recommendation of the rezone. So we will carry this over and have the public hearing at our next meeting on the 28th at 6:00 PM. Next item, 170521, request for consideration of ABC 050 retail beer and 070 retail table wine licenses for SD Investments and Developments LLC, DBA Homewood Shell located at 208A Oxmore Road, and an ABC 011 Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Package License for SD Investments and Developments LLC, DBA Homewood Package located at 208B Oxmore Road, brought to us by Melody Salter.
I did want to let you know, I think we've gotten the background check okay, but they have a, they have a somehow build out or renovation, so we haven't, fires said it'd be a little bit of time for the CO whatever before they could sign off, but I was going to see if y'all could just approve it pending the, no objection from fire police so that we could issue without having to come back once we get that.
We can, if someone is so inclined to make a motion to approve pending fire signing off on it.
Can we review again what exactly this is?
Sure. So all this, all of this is for us is just the ABC license.
It's an ownership change in the shell, but they must have done some renovations when they had the ownership change because it was an ownership change, so they have to get a new liquor license. So this is no change to what's currently being served at this facility?
Um, let's see.
It's been shut down, it hasn't been in service for a while I believe.
Okay, so.
Is this the shell at Oxmore and Great Springs?
Yes.
Pleasure.
Never mind, that's the wrong place.
All right, so the only thing that's before us is we have to give approval for the ABC board to move forward with their, whether or not they issue a license, that's up to them as to whether they.
So moved.
All we're doing is handling our part, which is the police department has to do background investigation, the fire department has to sign off on it, on the CO. So there was a motion from Mr. Alamon that I assume is pending fire, having no objection.
Pending fire, having no objection.
Thank you. All right, did I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Gier, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is nine to zero as well. All right, next item, 250417, request for consideration of 18th Street Revitalization Project brought to us by Counselor Waltonie, and we'll start with a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met June 7th and for this particular item voted five to zero to recommend approval for easement at Nadeau Property. We're carrying over the other for further action, but five to zero out of finance.
All right, we have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero and will be resolution 2179. All right, next item, 040521, bid opening set for June 7, 2021 at 4:31 for spring tree planting brought to us by our city arborists, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met and voted five to zero to recommend resetting bid opening for Monday, August 16, 2021 at 4:31 PM, five to zero.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, we don't need a vote on that since we're just resetting the date, correct?
No.
Okay, so that date has been reset for August 16. All right, next item, 080521, request for consideration to join the CABA Waste Authority brought to us by Berkeley Squires and the mayor, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval and after much deliberation designated J.J. Bischoff as the representative, five to zero.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kendrick.
Because of the membership, there's going to be some delay, so the resolution for J.J. will need to come back to you as soon as we know what his term is. So it's not in this resolution because in the resolution it's his term and we don't know what that is yet.
So the only, the only resolution for tonight then is to join the authority and then.
But not establish your term.
And then we will formally appoint Mr. Bischoff later.
As soon as they tell me what the term is.
That's correct. So essentially what's happening is they're trying to keep odd numbers in the authority so, for voting purposes, and we would be the sixth, and so we're waiting on the seventh and they're, they're very close to getting that done as well, but as soon as, this is just authorizing me, as soon as that seventh member agrees to come in, then both of us will join at the same time.
Who knows, doesn't that determine I'll bring back the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
So you're off the hook so far.
We still support you though, J.J.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, any questions or comments? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero and will be resolution 2180. Next item, 120521, request to consider budget amendments for fiscal year 2021 budgets brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. Another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, with this particular item, we met voted five to zero to recommend approval, but we've had five additions come in from Mr. Burgett, and so I just thought for, to make it simpler, just to go ahead and add those, they're in the resolution. So I feel like I need to just make the motion from the floor to approve the budget amendments with the, with the few additions that were made last Thursday.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Alamon, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's also nine to zero and will be resolution 2181. Next item, 140521, request to consider lease on property for parking spaces near the Homewood Antique Mall to Buddy Wade Estate brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met, voted five to zero to recommend amending the lease to $8,400, changing the lease going forward to pay the current property tax amount as well as handling the previous two years and that amount is $7,800, so five to zero out of finance.
Just to clarify, I think the past years is a separate item because it's in the.
Oh, that's right.
It's in the committee referral agenda.
This was, I think this one was just to amend the lease to say it changed with the property tax and then we're coming back to you finance to ask you for the past two years.
Perfect, okay, so we're just handling the lease amount for this current year. Yeah, moving forward.
It's essentially a new lease that just specifies that the rent should be the, the taxes assessed by the Jefferson County Tax Assessment Law.
Good, great. All right, so we've got a motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero and will be resolution 2182. Next item, 180521, request for consideration and authorization for mayor to sign lease for space on the third floor of City Hall brought by myself, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval, authorizing the mayor to sign the lease, so five to zero coming out of finance.
All right, and that's another motion from finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero and it's resolution 2183, which brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the committee referral agenda.
Seven, second.
Motion by Ms. Nels, second by Ms. Andres, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero as well. All right, which brings us to other new business. 060621, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract to accept CBG grant to the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission brought to us by Counselor Barry Smith and Eddie Griffith, who's a member of the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission. We did have a discussion about this in finance last week and talked about the timing of this and that's why we have moved, have brought it up on other new business, but we, this is about the survey, resur surveying of Rosedale, so over the east side of Rosedale, west side of Rosedale. West, I can never.
West.
West side of Rosedale.
And it's, yeah, surveying for historically significant structures.
Yeah, so, okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andres, second by Ms. Gier, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero and is resolution 2184. All right, our last item, 070621, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May 25, 2021 through June 14, 2021 brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones, who's got the, understood?
Mr. Harden, I'll defer to him.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I did have some questions that Ms. Salter answered and so I moved, we approved the vouchers for the period of May 25, 2021 to June 14, 2021.
Thank you very much, we have a motion from Mr. Harden?
Seven.
We have a second from Ms. Nels.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero and is 2185, and believe it or not, that is the end of the agenda for tonight, so we will move on for comments from the mayor and council. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, thank you. Today is Mark's 18 years of my wife putting up with me, so if you guys would be able to let me go a little early, she would probably hate you for it. So you can, you can speak as long as you want. Little joke. Real quick, want to say Counselor Nels, Counselor Andres and I, tonight before we came to meeting, we're at a reception for Senator Jabba Wagner in Vestavia for his fifth award as a hometown hero for what he's done for District 16 and all of us. Of course, he's got half of Homewood, he's got Oxmore South, but, but just an incredible man, if you guys have never met him, I would certainly tell you to reach out to him. He is incredibly smart and he's got a good, good team of people around him as well and I was just, I was very impressed with him, so that was just a neat experience and I think that's all I've got.
Thank you very much.
Well, real quick, I had the pleasure today of sending out an email in regards to my first upcoming budget to request all of my individual department head meetings, so y'all can pray for me for the next month and a half.
Exciting times.
I appreciate it.
And congratulations.
It always comes around too soon every year.
Yeah, that's right.
More to Leah than you, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I do not make things, I don't make things easy.
All right, Ms. Gier.
Yes, I'll just take a minute to report that our Homewood Arts Council Chair switched hands today from Hannah Johnson to Brian Collins and they are in the process of planning picking in the park and homemade October 10th, and they look forward to hearing that their, their funds have been freed up for that event and, and they're excited to get back, to get back planning art and fun events for us, so that's all for tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Alamon?
Just trying to follow in the mayor's footsteps, but my wife and I are celebrating 13 years next week, so.
Congratulations to you as well.
Congratulations to her for putting up with me for that long, so I also just want to say that we are excited about all the stuff that's happening in our city and in Ward two in particular, and that I'm grateful for the mayor and the council for everything they do for our part of Homewood, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nels?
Good evening, everyone. Just a little update on the past week, we had our quarterly meeting with Sanford, not with Sanford, but of Sanford, you know, topics and events as it relates to Sanford, the Sanford property and neighbors that live along that area. We also opened it up and had a Ward four, you know, kind of roundtable discussion for all Ward four folks to come in and talk to us and, you know, do a little Q and A, update on what we've been working on, work, you know, talking back and forth about things we can do and update them further on. The newsletter went out, I think, I want to say three weeks ago, and so we kind of recapped the newsletter, basically which entails some information about Ward four and flooding and the Sanford properties, the Park at Park, and we just kind of updated on all those things and went over the newsletter. Those notes, I have not gone over them yet to get to you or however we should post those, but they will be available for our constituents to read. It's not, you know, it's not Hollywood or anything, but just, you know, information that I think, you know, they want to have. Also, Barry has been working with Randy Hamley to get those questions answered about the traffic calming measures on Wellington. They had some pretty serious issues up there and so those radar signs will actually go to Wellington, because now Hollywood Boulevard has a four-way stop that seems sufficient for what needs to be done there and the radar signs will go to Wellington. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andres?
Okay, so we are not going to set public safety. Counselor Smith had asked me to set special issues, but she didn't have anything refer and I just tried to get in touch with her and wasn't able to get her, do you think I should still set that or?
I do, I think she has an item on there.
Oh, she does have an, okay, okay, so then she needs to set that for, we will set that for six o'clock for her, is that 15 minutes then?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and then Kale, do you think we'll be ready on the tree ordinance to talk about it in committee next week, the 21st?
Briefly, I mean, yeah.
Okay, okay, so I'll just set it.
We can at least have an update, it may not be the finished product, but we can have an update.
Okay, so let's do that for 6:15 then, if that's okay. And I just wanted to.
Hey, Jennifer, I'm only 15 minutes, I think.
You're at 5:45, right?
Right, okay.
Yeah, so I've got six.
Six and 6:15.
6:15, okay, yeah. Okay, and so I just wanted to give a big thank you to Chris Thacker, I have been wearing him out and he was on vacation last week and he was pleasant and still would talk to me and take my calls, so Berkeley, I'm sorry about that with Chris Thacker, he's been amazing and the Water Works is just like, if you could see my house, I mean, it's almost comical that, it's almost like they chose where John and I live and then just tore up everything all around us, like, I mean, and I'm on a corner, so it's my front yard and it's my driveway and it's just a mess, but I did, the guys are great, I mean, Willoughby and the Water Works, my contact at the Water Works has just been amazing, every time I reach out to her, she gets right back to me, the project manager, and I did walk out on Friday and had a long talk with them in my front yard and just said, okay, I just want to make sure that Rumson and Yorkshire and Windsor.